Welcome to the ordinance committee meeting of April 11th, 2023. It is 6:05. We are in comments room B in the basement. We don't have any minutes to approve anybody from the public that would like to speak on any topic that's not on our agenda, and how is the time to do so? See none. This brings us to our new business. And what I would like to do is I'd like to just talk about a little bit of the history of the LED sign ordinance and the electronic messenger message center ordinance. So this was something that the council dealt with, and I'm trying to remember, I think it was maybe 2015. And basically, was the genesis of electronic signs and the creating of these ordinances was about the gas station across from McDonald's wanted to do a remodel. And they wanted to put electronic signs to show the price of gas. And they made the argument that it was safer for their employees, that because before they'd have to go out, they'd have to take like a little suction cup with a thing and change the price of gas, regardless of the weather, time of day, et cetera. And they're like, this is so much easier, so we can do this. And that seemed all well and good, made out of a committee with a recommendation. But when it got to the full council, there was a sentiment on the council that we didn't want East Hampton to look like Las Vegas. So that was, that was what people extrapolated from this whole process. And so it failed. And so electronic signs were prohibited in East Hampton. And then, you know, the, interestingly enough, another gas station went up and they put electronic signs up anyway. So it came back to us, and it was a different composition of the council. People were like, ah, this makes sense, they've already done it, let's fix it. So that's where we got the current LED service station LED sign ordinance. And this, I think, is less important to look at than the electronic message center. Now, that came out of this whole conversation because like we started talking about, like, well, there was some interest from the school department to maybe put an electronic sign in Pep. And that was not well received again by the council. And so what we did was we, we came up with an ordinance that would control the kind of time, place, and manner of electronic messaging centers. Now, for, I guess for everybody to, that is a larger sized board sign that can change messages, it can display pictures, it can, so it's controlled by a different, you know, indoors, but it can display a lot of different things, wayfinding, community alerts, et cetera. The ironic thing is, you know, technically, the wayfinding signs that we put at, for example, at the Rotary, that, if you think about it, it's an electronic messaging center. And currently would not be allowed in East Hampton under our zone.
Okay, okay.
So, and there's, there's a bunch of different examples that we could use of where these actually can be very helpful, where they can be unobtrusive and not be necessarily causing problems for neighbors or causing problems for residents, but actually potentially enhancing the experience for visitors and neighbors and et cetera. So I felt like it made sense to bring this back, to take a look at the very limited electronic messaging center and service station ordinance that we created in order to say, now that we're in this 2023, and we see these things being used, and it's not as scary as it once was, like, we're not going to turn into Las Vegas or, you know, wherever, wherever Disney is, we're like the main drags, right? Because right now, electronic messaging centers are limited to the mixed, mixed-use mill industrial districts, that's it. So that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. I know that the schools probably would be benefit from this, being able to use this. I think that there's a potential for, I think some churches in town are interested in. And, and I think that, again, in an emergency, these are things that could potentially be used to relay important information to citizens. I'm not exactly sure, you know, I think that as we kind of move through this, I want to make sure that those portable ones that we put at the Rotary are not prohibited by this. Because I feel like that is, that's a, that's a public safety, those are used for, and public information. So if you take a look at this, it says, "Electronic messaging centers shall be limited to mixed-use mill industrial districts only. Under the following restrictions: operation controls, changes, the duration of each message shall be at least 30 seconds as recommended by the U.S. Department of Transportation. Transition between messages shall be less than one second." A change of, so, and, and the reason for that is sometimes you get these messages that would be like, it would be like little tiles that would fill up and it would, you know, it was kind of distracting. Or it would be like, you know, things slowly scrolling across and you'd have to, so, "A change of message must occur simultaneously on the entire face. Messages shall not contain flashing, animation, scrolling, rolling, or running images or letters." And that, the, the reason for that is just the level of distraction that it causes to drivers.
That makes sense.
So brightness, the sign's brightness must have the ability to respond to changes in ambient light levels. Signs shall be equipped with brightness dimming controls. Brightness levels must be no more than federal highway standards. And I think that all, like universally, these signs that are being sold are compliant with the standards. Not like we're gonna, not like we're gonna expect our building inspector to go out there with a, you know, a lumine, a lumine meter. I mean, they might, but, you know, I think if we keep it to the federal highway standards, that's probably safe. Non-message inner background lights shall be off. Message lights shall be one color. And this, I think we might need to maybe take a look at. If you look at some of the newer signs, you, you might find that they have different colors, like a maybe a blue background and black lettering, or, and it's, it's not dangerous. So I think that that's one of the things that we might want to look at as far as changing. And then we have location, "One message center shall be, shall be permitted per property in allowed districts." So at this point, there's only one allowed district. "Location shall conform to all other regulations with regard to free-standing signs, and electronic messaging centers must be free-standing signs." "The allowable working area of an EMC shall be limited to no more than 75% of the allowable max area of the sign in said zone." It's another one that, you know, we could potentially take a look at. And we must have done some, no, how do I not remember updating this in 2022?
Because this is a Sony, and when they do, the review was about all the ordinance except Sony.
Right, right, right.
So that's why we never touched this.
Okay, okay. So EMC sign messages may relate only to goods and services offered on the premises. And that is something that I would like to change because I feel like messages should, if there's a community benefit, that should be allowed. You know, so an example of that is if we allowed the Congregational Church on the corner of Main Street, that's the Congregational Church. If we allowed them to have one of these, and we had a microburst again, you know, and Mountain Road was closed for a longer period of time, or, you know, sections of town had the power out, like, it might be helpful to have them be able to have a message on there that's like, "Mountain Road is closed, and if you need water, come to the, go to, you know, Hendrick Street," or whatever, right? So, and then, "In mixed-use industrial districts, EMC is only permitted in our properties with 100,000 square feet or more floor area. EMC shall not be eliminated between the hours of 11 and 7, or no later than operating business hours if beyond 11." So that's the, and I think, like I said, I think the electronic messaging center one is more pressing. I think I wanted to put the LED service station one in there just because as we go through this and we look at, look at these, it might make sense to just take another look at that one and say, hey, is there anything we want to, you know, move around in here? So, you know, I, I think the first probably step here is to say, okay, where do we think that these things could be appropriate? And beyond that, do we want to put in any municipal exemptions? So that could mean, if a school wanted to put one of these up, that they wouldn't, they would be exempt from the ordinance. They could put up a sign, and if like, say, the highway department wanted to put one up, you know, regardless of, like, if we said, oh, these are only allowed in downtown business district and mill industrial and highway business. You know, but maybe the DPW garage is right outside the, you know, the downtown business district. They could put one up. That, that would be an example of that. So that's one question that we'd want to ask. I think the, the other question is, where else do we think that these would be acceptable? And, and maybe those places that I just mentioned could be a possibility. But again, you know, I'm not a proponent of having these everywhere. I, I don't, I don't think that having these in our, you know, arts district. I guess I'm agnostic to that, like, it could be good, it could be bad. It's hard to say depending on the use and depending on people's vision for it. But I, I think that's kind of part of our job is to say, okay, what could be, what could be good about these? What could be bad about these? How do we find that, like, maybe be a little looser than we are now, but also protect some character of the downtown area or of neighborhoods and whatnot? So, thoughts?
I mean, I'll just say, I, I think I'm, I'm relatively agnostic like you are. The only, so I, I think commercially should be out. Because I, I think that the industry that is most likely to abuse the usage of these signs is the commercial industry. So I, I don't know, I guess I don't know how I feel about blanketized exceptions. I would say, if, if I were gonna say one that should get a blanketized exception is public safety. So Police Department, Public Works, you know, if, if Mass DOT needs to set something up, like, that makes perfect sense to me. And then I, the only other thing that I, I worry about, and this is partly because it's my personal experience, but I know others experience it as well, is, so I have a visual processing disability, and sometimes flashing lights are, well, I mean, for me, it's bad enough that I actually don't drive. I have, I have people drive for me whenever I need to go somewhere. But, you know, people with, people with autism, people with epilepsy, visual processing disorders, more introduction of LED signs can make it very uncomfortable for those people to move around public spaces. But I mean, if we're talking about like, like the ones that are at the Rotary right now, though, I don't, at least for me and my experience, those are, those are not uncomfortable signs.
Right.
Where, where I think it gets really uncomfortable is the really, you know, like when you go to like, and of course, I'm not suggesting this would be Times Square, but some of the Times Square signs are like so intense that the shadows don't even exist because there's just light saturation everywhere. Those kinds of really high intensity LED signs are problematic, but.
Yeah, well, and I'd say the difference between those and what we have here, so these would have to be static images. So the Times Square images are not static, and they're flashing, they're moving.
Right, right.
So this would, this would basically just be like looking at a computer screen that is frozen.
Okay, yeah.
So, you know, I think, because that would be an absolute no, because if you have people with strobe sensitivity, like, you can't have that on the road.
Yeah, right.
So, so this would be, you know, and I think the only thing that we have to be careful, well, there's probably more than one thing we have to be careful of. But when we do regulate signs, we have to be mindful of the fact that we cannot regulate content. That, that is a, that is unconstitutional.
Yep, yep.
So, you know, saying that no commercial, so that puts us in, right? So, but then, but we can limit the, the, you know, time, place, and manner. So we could say, no, they can't be here, they can't be here, it can't, and mind you, none of these have been put up in the mill industrial district. So, not a huge, there's not a huge demand for this. So, I mean, that could put us to the place where we're like, oh, well, municipal exemption, municipal property is allowed to put these in, you know. And so that, we were not regulating content, we're just regulating time, place, and manner. So that could be one way that we kind of go about this.
Yep.
And I would say, that would, that would limit if, if there was a, you know, if there was another entity that, and I don't even know why I think that the Congregational Church would want one of these, but I feel like that is in my head somehow, that maybe they were interested in one of these. Did you tell me?
Yes, they, because they, the, the one they have now is really, really old.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And based on, on the ordinance that we have today, if they, if they take that one down, they're not allowed to put another one.
They're not allowed to put another one, okay.
So, and one of the main reasons, it probably happens at the, at the gas station, is one, we're getting old.
Yeah.
And I'm talking about us, as a community, we are getting old. And we are, have to be more careful when we go on ladder and change disability people.
Yep.
So to avoid that, so I think the church is willing to invest in one, a LED sign. They will be easier for them to control.
And probably easier for people to read.
To read, and yes.
Yeah, so municipal exemption would still prohibit them from doing that, and, and I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not necessarily trying to be able to get them to do that. I, like, I think that that is something that we can have as an example of how this could be used outside of the municipal realm, which could have some community benefit. I think that most, I mean, just off the top, as, as a business owner, I think that most other business owners probably are not looking to invest in an expensive sign.
As a business owner, you never want this.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, it's, it's, I'm thinking, you know, it would be, it would, it would be tough, but this is where I kind of get into that stuck mode of like, yeah, I don't want to see these going up everywhere, like, if every cannabis place puts one of these up, like, that's.
That was just in my head, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's not a great thing. But again, like, or, to be fair, if every liquor store puts one of these up.
Or every gas station.
Or every gas station has like a big sign, you know, so, but then again, if we.
Oh my God.
McDonald's, right, right, which, which I haven't seen nationwide, I haven't seen that yet, but that could be a trend that comes. And at the end of the day, it might look better than what is currently there. So that brings us back to the idea of, okay, we can regulate the size, we can regulate the, you know, how bright they are, we can regulate.
And I think that's the key, how bright.
How bright, right. So, and then I think, honestly, I think we did do, because I remember what I did was when, when we did this, so when I brought this forward, I used a model sign ordinance for, that was actually enacted in multiple other cities. And, and I was like, all right, let's put this in highway business, downtown business, mixed industrial, in the places where they would make sense to go. And, and then it ended up getting amended to just be mil, mixed, the mil, mixed industrial, the mill industrial. So, you know, we don't have to make any decisions tonight, but I think this is something that we do want to make sure that we put a lot, enough thought into.
And I, I agree, I think tonight is not a night to, to make a decision. I think the first step of having this conversation, I think, I'm one of those in our community that we are, I'm always thinking about the character of the city. But at the same time, I'm, I'm thinking about how we can improve businesses in a way that people with disabilities, people that have this, already have signs, they can improve their services or their, their advertising or their selling inside. I'm always thinking that, sometimes taking this from Mr. Vice President, thinking out of box, right? If we really want to, me as a business owner, we want to put something in front of the window that is really bright, I can do it now.
Yeah, you can do it now.
So we, if, if business owner from College to Union Street, everybody in the same page that want to put something on the street, we can look like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like New York.
You could put a big screen TV in your front window.
And that's a lot.
And you could have moving images, you could have anything you want on there.
So these are just pertaining specifically to outside structures?
Outdoor, free-standing signs.
Okay.
That would be a lot.
It would be a lot.
And they are not doing it today. Because again, as a business owner, you don't want to spend money on something that. But I think this is a great conversation, I think it's a, multiple places in our city that I can see this happening.
Yeah.
And it will be productive and good for the community if we have that connection again with the churches and, hey, you know what? The mountain is closed, can you please pull on the sign? I predict they're gonna say yes.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, if we create that relationship with some of, in this case, nonprofit, or church, or religious entity. So I think this is a great step, to start the conversation.
I think so too. And so I, I think what we'll do is, you know, what I would say is, as we, between now and our next meeting, as you go around town, take a look at the signs that are up. And, and envision, like, okay, if the Congregational Church sign was a digital sign that had a static message on it, like, service at Sunday at 12, or something, like, would that be offensive? Would that be distracting the traffic?
And I think visiting all the town that they have it.
Yeah.
That would be helpful too.
Right, right.
So because in all the cities and towns, they, they, they already have it.
Right, right.
And to see how destructive or bright it is to the section of the areas.
Right, true, it's the, in Northampton, like, the Academy of Music has one of those on the outside of their building.
It has a, like a, a marquee one.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's also saying, Northampton High School has, under our sign, we have two little digital signs that like give messages about, you know, no school today, et cetera. Yeah, so, and I, and I think that we can also take a look, that when we meet next time, we could take a look at the, the service station LED sign. I, I mean, I think this one's actually pretty, pretty good. And one of the things is they're allowed anywhere that there is a gas station. We had to, we had to fix that. Because, because we originally said, highway business, yeah, well, there's, under 10, there's a gas station going out towards College Highway Variety.
Yeah.
And they, they redid, and the thing is, is when a gas station gets redone, they just put, they have everything ready to go, and it was a digital sign.
Yeah, it's true, because I saw, but I won't lay in the one that, like, remote.
So, we're like, oh, wait, this doesn't work. And so, and then, you know, and nobody on the council was like, oh, take it down, like, that's not, that's, it's more like, oh, let's adjust this, because that makes sense, it makes sense, like, it's not offensive, we're fine with it. You know, so what we can do is we can adjust our, sometimes you have to adjust the laws to match what's on the ground. You know, because you, like, it just happens sometimes.
So I, I am very unfamiliar with this type of technical language, I don't know.
The foot candles?
Yes.
Yeah.
What, what exactly is a foot candle, because it?
It's the brightness of holding a candle from one foot away.
Ah, interesting, okay. So point, point eight of, so basically 80% of a foot away from your face.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
No, that's fine, I was just, I, I'm, I assumed it had something to do with candles.
Yeah, and when they, when they install the signs, they do, they give like a report of the brightness. So the building inspector, when they sign off on the sign, they have that, they can see.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's, that's.
So Commissioner Church obviously knows this kind of stuff, this is like regular run-of-the-mill stuff that they do?
I think so.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, I know, sometimes it's, I, I feel like I need to understand the technical language, but sometimes I think it's, it's fine to, to trust the professionals with the degrees that do this kind of stuff. Because it's, it's too much to absorb sometimes.
Yep.
Okay.
So, let's, let's, we'll come back to that one when Tom's here, and we'll catch Tom up on that, but I think. So the other piece of new business that we have is something that was sent to us by Chief Alberdi. And this is interesting. So this would allow, it's called civilian traffic control officer. It would allow the chief to appoint individuals of good moral character
Interesting.
to the position of civilian traffic control officer. And they will work under the oversight and discretion of the chief of police. And they will direct, monitor, and control traffic through and around road construction sites. The civilian traffic control officer's responsibility shall include, but not limited to, directing vehicular and pedestrian traffic through or around construction zones, informing motorists of possible detour routes, reporting disobedient drivers, law enforcement officials, and answering motorists' questions. Civilian traffic control officers must demonstrate a firm commitment to carry out assignments in a competent, timely, professional manner. This is something I've seen all over the world, honestly. Like, in Massachusetts, if you're not a police officer, you're not allowed to do traffic duty.
Right, right.
To like, at construction. This would allow a civilian to be able to, and if you've ever, like, out west, I see this all the time, where you have like a person wearing a safety vest, they have a sign that says slow or stop, and they're clearly a civilian, and there's two of them, and they are, they have a radio, and they control the traffic. So that would set up something in East Hampton that would allow us to have something similar.
Wow, I, I mean, I, I guess, so it's funny, I, I obviously grew up in a different state, I've lived in multiple states, and I don't think I ever realized that we don't do that here until now that you've mentioned it, and you're right, it's always police officers.
And they're making time and a half every single time.
Right, right.
At least.
Yeah, which would free them up to be able to work on things like active investigations and patrol, and whatnot.
Okay. You know, and, and it also, I think, really could be a money saver. But, you know, this is something that I, I think what I'll do is for our next meeting, I'll invite the chief.
Okay.
And I, the, yeah.
Just for, for you to know, the person have to take a training that is four hours.
Okay.
And after the four hours, I don't, I don't think they have to take a test. I know they have to take a training, there will be, as a certification.
Okay.
And with that certification, they will be allowed to do the, the traffic.
Yeah.
And I did send over, there is a traffic, like, there's state accreditation standards for this, and the chief shared those with us. This was also reviewed by the solicitor.
Okay.
So already.
Okay.
So that's something that when, when the chief comes in, we can kind of take a full look at. Did, did you get the solicitor's review of this?
I, I don't believe so, no.
Yeah, I'll, let me see if I can send it to you.
I mean, I certainly don't want to rush the process, and maybe it's fair to let Councilor Peak weigh in, but this to me seems easy.
Yeah, I, I think this is gonna be, so, I think it's gonna be important for us to review the solicitor's comments, so that's why I'm gonna send it to you right now.
Okay.
And I'm gonna send it to Tom. And that way, when we meet next time and we have the chief here, we should be good to, to, you know, look at this a little bit, with a little bit more depth. But I think it's just good for us to put that on the radar. Now, you have any questions on that, Brad? That particular piece?
No, not at all. No, not at all. I think that's that seems pretty standard to me and I I've seen it in practice my whole life, so.
Yeah. So so the only other thing was the ordinance review committee's final report. And I started going through that to kind of parse out some of the things that we hadn't addressed yet. It's, you know, some of them are just a little ambiguous, so it's gonna take me because really what the reason why this is still on our thing is so we can take a look at that list again. And I imagine that you've gotten a copy of that, right? Okay. So for us to take a look at that and we're gonna have to submit those items that we want to kind of work on. We can decide on them together in committee because we can talk about them. But I think when we actually go to do the nuts and bolts of like changing them, we're gonna have to submit them as new agenda items.
Okay.
But before we submit things for new agenda items, I think it does make sense for us to talk about which ones we want to prioritize.
Okay.
Because there's a couple that are just kind of, you know.
Meaning we submit them to this?
We submit them to the full council to come back to this committee. Just so it's like clear to the public what we're working on.
Sure.
Because this is a little bit ambiguous, like, you know, reviewing the final report. So what we can, because that is on our agenda, we can say, okay, we think that this piece in the final report, it makes sense to bring forward to the committee, we think that this piece makes sense, and we can kind of prior, I think it would, it's almost like a triage, like which ones are the most important to bring. And I started looking at those again and I was hoping to have a prioritized list, but I did not bring that. And Tom's not here anyway, so we can wait for him to to do that for next time just. But I would just say, if you have a chance to look at it again. You might just want to take a look. And let me just see what we got here, okay. So that being said, I think we don't have a lot else. So maybe we should look at another meeting. And I think, let me see how, the twenty-fifth could work for me.
This month?
Yeah, but or we could just go to the first of the or we could go to May.
Let me just double check.
So either either the twenty-fifth of April or the ninth of May would be good for me.
Yeah, that's that's fine.
Okay.
Tuesdays are are.
Perfect, okay, perfect, yeah. So what do you think, the twenty-fifth or the ninth?
Yeah, we can do the twenty-fifth, yeah. Honestly, I think it would be nice to, not to rush it, but to wrap these two items up and then use the the kind of downtime, if you will.
Yeah.
To focus on the on the review report because I, at least since I've been on the ordinance committee, it has been.
It's been.
Business, 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 nonstop.
Yep.
It would be nice to pot up on on some of these extra things, so the twenty-fifth works fine for you.
Perfect. And our, I mean, our, this is, I mean, honestly, there's some times when we have a, you know, a list that goes on for miles of things to deal with. Right now, we're pretty good, so. Yeah, so, okay, so I'm gonna put that in, I'm gonna, I'll email everybody.
Okay.
Saying that our next meeting is at the twenty-fifth at six and we'll, I think what we'll focus on, I think these three items that we had on the agenda tonight are the ones I'm gonna put on there, that way we can really focus in on them.
Okay.
Brad, you want, you want to be included in this Omar?
Yes, please.
I'm gonna, um, and I just give me Barbara. Barbara. All right, so that's our next meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
All right, I I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.